All right, it's six o'clock. We'll get started. Uh, we're gonna do a pledge, uh, Ms. Willie and invocation, Ms. Pam. So if you don't mind, rise.
Sir.
Do the flag in the United States of America. And to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and the responsibility that it is for those of us at this table. Um, I'd specifically like to ask for your prayers for Ms. Jackie Granberry and the loss of her daughter this last week. And I want to pray for protection for all of our officers and our, um, workers here in the city. Please be with us as we make decisions tonight that all the decisions we make would be for the best interest of the citizens of Mount Pleasant. Thank you so much for your love and your name and then.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank y'all ladies. All right, roll call please ma'am.
Bill White?
Here.
Jacqueline Granberry, Mike Davis, Willie Alderson.
Here.
Pam Johnston.
Here.
All right, we've got two sets of minutes from the study session and the regular commission from sixteenth and the twenty first. Once you've reviewed, I'll entertain a motion.
They were long, but.
Yeah, they're a little long.
I make a motion that we approve the study session from November sixteenth and the regular meeting, November twenty first.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Awards, presentation appointments? Nothing on?
We don't have any, we will in January, but we don't this month.
Right. Uh, completion review of unfinished business from our prior meetings, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven nineteen. This will be a public hearing and a final reading, an ordinance to amend portions of Title eleven, chapter three of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to offenses against the peace and quiet.
And Mayor, Commissioner, if you've heard about this for the last couple of months, we do have the police department here, but we had the ability to, to cite people that had excessive noise with their vehicles. But we didn't have the ability to cite people at their, at their businesses, so that's what this is about. Welcome.
You don't mind, please let the minutes reflect.
Yeah, let the minutes reflect that Ms. Granberry is here, so we have her here as well.
All right, this is a public hearing and final reading. Would anybody in the audience care to speak to this? Please let the minutes reflect. Come on forward, Ms. Lisa. You don't mind, state your name.
My name is Lisa Cole. I live at one oh six West Merchant Street. Um, it's my understanding that we are in need of a city manager. And, cause Kate is retiring.
I think you want to do this at the end.
I can't do that, okay, okay, that's fine.
Now, this is about our peace and quiet.
Kind of both related.
Yeah, they're kind of both related. Yeah, we do need peace and quiet, please.
Kate, where's my package?
In your.
No, it's not.
Okay, any, uh, comments from the commission hearing that we had no one care to speak? Kate said we've been through this time or two.
And there's no changes from birth rating?
There you go.
No. Jackie, anything you'd like to add to it? Keith, anything you'd like to add? They've already spoken on it, so. All right, hearing no objection, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash one 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 nine.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor report, I'll be brief, as you know, but, uh, we talked about it briefly at the work session. Uh, in four business days, uh, last week and the week before, we announced over a hundred and eighty-five new jobs in Mount Pleasant. For an investment of over sixty million dollars. And, um, the fact that, uh, one of these companies is from Taiwan. It is a big gig, this came out of Nashville, from the governor's office, and it was referred here. So, a lot of people helped with this. Mount Pleasant, Mount Pleasant Power, Nashville Chamber of Commerce was a huge help with it, David. Um, so there's a lot of people to thank, uh, because that's, that's changed, that's life-changing. Um, got two grants, uh, that we rewarded last week, water and sewer. And they were CDBG, and Kate and I were talking, and I don't remember the last time we got a CDBG grant because that's kind of the governor's pen. And, uh, so that is great.
Been a couple of years, for sure.
Yeah. So that's great to see, and, uh, that's really all I have. Um, monthly financial budget report, please ma'am.
I passed out, um, the financial disclosure, um, sheets for y'all. This is the M, M TASS's document that they sent me recently. We were at, me and two other people from the city, we were at, um, PAUD to attend the utilities training. And a couple of the things they brought up that, you know, cities tend to just maybe sometimes fall into cracks, or just something that we need to make sure is happening. Because not only are you all over our governmental funds, you're also over all of our utility funds. And there's certain oversight requirements from the state that is on elected officials, um, to do, um, as part of being oversight board for a utility. Um, one of them, I emailed out about the twenty-four hours of education that you have to do during your four-year term. Twelve hours in the first year of election, and the other twelve hours can be done in the last three years of your election. So as far as your four-year period, you have to do twenty-four hours of CPE. We haven't been required to report it anywhere, but with the oversight, the state comptroller's office oversight board reviewing a lot of our financials and stuff. They could ask for us to provide that documentation at any point. So I know when you all attend any of the trainings that are, um, hosted by M TASS or, um, any of the state organization, they usually will email you a certificate at the end of it. So make sure you all are keeping those. If you want us to keep those on your files and records, as soon as you receive them, you can send them here. So that way, if the state ever required us to provide any documentation, we already have them in your file and you don't have to dig them up. But if you want us to keep that record, we can just, if you won't, just start providing those to us, that would be good. Um, code of ethics in the financial disclosure, I already provided you all with that. You are required to do that once a year, um, and you are pretty much disclosing to the state of Tennessee. Now, that's state law. Um, and that's what that document that I provided you all is. Um, I can go online and see, um, which one of our commissioners have done it and which have not. That is something that the auditors want to see. So my auditors have asked me about that, and that's what kind of put it on my radar. And then it was also brought up at one of our conferences. But, um, I can go online and look, uh, so you just do it once a year. You go to the state's website and fill it out. It's just a disclosure saying, you know, conflict of interest policies and everything. And then, um, if there's anything that changes, once you've done that, you are required to go online and update it. If nothing changes in a calendar year, you don't have to go back and do it again, just do it once a year.
The only difficult part is we can't give you a form, you have to go online.
Go on the state website.
You, you should, because I receive it every year, just FYI. You will probably receive a letter in the mail.
Okay.
From the state of Tennessee that says you gotta do this. And it literally is, you click online and say you haven't got any, click it off, it's that.
Quickly done, okay.
But you should get notification through via a letter as well.
And I can review, uh, the records, so I think all of y'all have done it for this year. If there's a commissioner that has not, I will go ahead and email y'all, let y'all know that I don't see one out there for you. And then that way you can get one before December thirty first, because you have to do one for every year. Um, that was, and I've sent the CPE information. Uh, Sonia did go ahead and process y'all's payroll early, so it should have hit y'all's bank today. That was done. And then next month's meeting, we will have the budget amendment, the semi-annual budget amendment we do, will probably review where our budget is standing. And then the audit report should be on next month's agenda as well.
Good, I was wondering where it was.
Yeah, it's pretty much done. They're gonna, tomorrow's their last day on site, so hopefully. But anyways, they're trying to date it December thirty first, so.
Okay.
It will be, it should be done in the next week or so.
Good.
That is all I have, if you all have any questions for me.
Any questions for Shipper? You can now entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the monthly finance budget report after the meeting.
Got a motion, do we have a second? I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, monthly report from city manager.
And, and Mayor, just to kind of, uh, piggyback on what you said, we did two grants. Uh, the water grant was six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and the sewer grant was five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So that's an infusion of well over a million dollars into our community, and we really appreciate that. Do want to mention that we are talking with T-Dot on a regular basis about North Main Street closing because of the bridge that they're, they're working on. And they're supposed to have signage out by January third, redirecting traffic. We're working with them very closely, it should be a quick project, but we're working on that. Want to also say that the Boys and Girls Club contract is not on the agenda, because we're gonna go meet with them in January about, uh, a few things that we wanted to get talked about. And then, um, I think that's, that's it, I just want to make sure that you all were aware of those things.
Okay, anything else, Kate?
No, thank you.
All righty, special reports wastewater.
All right, let me get to that. So we have actually made quite a bit of progress on Rainey Street, and they have, um, I'll get that in front of me. Um, they, they have, uh, electrical platform is in fabrication on Rainey Street. All gravity piping has been installed, wet well has been installed. So usually, I'm telling you, we're waiting on things on Rainey Street. Rainey Street's making a lot of progress. The, uh, trunk line, the line is to be inspected once the new wa- wastewater plant is in place. You know, we've looked at it and we've seen some problems, but we're waiting for the new, uh, plant to be in place. And then, uh, you also know that the, the wastewater, the big plant project is waiting on electrical equipment. And then the wastewater system model is like an ongoing project. So kind of the, the month, this monthly update, the biggest update is we have a lot of progress on Rainey Street, which is good.
That's right. See them down there working, I won't go down there, because they either wake us, sit you in there or run.
Yeah.
It's good to see them down there.
There's not much turnaround there.
Nope. Uh, anything on the gas?
Uh, uh, all is going well. We are gonna reapply for that grant that we did not get, we're gonna apply for the spring round of that. And, um, what we heard, kind of the reasons that we did not get it, we, we were kind of, uh, going back and saying that our gas provider does not agree with some of those reasons. So I think it's all good, we're just gonna try again. And, um, I think it's April.
Okay, good. All right, any questions for Kate? Those two, all right, new business ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven twenty, and this is the first reading. An ordinance revising and updating building-related permit fees pursuant to the two thousand eighteen edition of the International Building Code. And is adopted by the city of Mount Pleasant. Chris, you wanna tell us what we got going on here?
Well, the new program that we are going to start using from local government. When the, uh, gentleman was programming the, the system, he found that two numbers the computer would not generate. Because they were all, there's four tiers to our evaluation, and we need to change two numbers, which will only increase the building permit fee. Total building per permit fee by, first tier is twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. The second tier that was out will be forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Now, that is the total amount for a permit that we use the evaluation table for. Uh, so seeing that, that's all the increase that will occur.
Okay. Chris, what of this, it's late during our study session?
And all of these attachments are kind of exactly what we've been trying to, looking forward to go by, that we're following the International Building Code. And, um, we ran into an issue when the tile plant expanded, that we didn't have some of this backup, and all this is very helpful.
Well, I, I want to throw this out there for those in attendance tonight. We'd purchased this software to help us do this, and it wasn't working for us. And a very minor change, now it's working for us.
Fixes it, yes.
Twenty-two dollars, come on. So we got it working for us. What it's there for.
Absolutely.
Chris, thank you, any questions for Chris while he's here? You can now entertain a motion.
Make a more, make a motion that we accept ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven twenty as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you said pass?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not sure I understood you.
All right, resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant authorizing and providing the currents and indebtedness for the purpose of providing a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, enlarging, improving, and/or extending its public works department. A lot's been said for us to buy a back truck.
Right, yeah, I agree. Mayor and commissioners, that this is the resolution that we have to pass based on USDA. But this is the same back truck that we've talked about for over several years. And you know that we have, that they're giving us a discount and that we're getting a grant from USDA and, but financing the rest of it, and that's what this resolution is about.
All right, any questions, comments?
And the resolution, uh, from USDA says city council.
City council is here and trying to figure out to fix that.
Instead of commission?
Yeah. But, um, I would, I hope that if this passes, we can move forward with signing on that.
Okay. Any questions, Cory, on what she had to say about it? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty.
Got a motion, do we have a second? I'll, I'll second it. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
You passed, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-one, a resolution approving Collier Engineering Company contract for the twenty twenty-two multimodal sidewalk, sidewalk project.
So, uh, Mayor, Commissioners, this is something that we applied for, and we were, um, granted money, and we've been working with Collier, Collier Engineering. And we had a contract that we need to get approved. And Cory had some comments, and, uh, Jeff Manos is here in the audience, and he's with, uh, Collier Engineering. But what you have in front of you is what we all have agreed on, that basically they accepted Cory's comments, but they weren't major. Um, so we're ready to move forward on that, and that's what's in front of you right now. Cory, you haven't missed anything?
No.
Okay.
We've talked about this, we've had this grant for some time. Time to finally get it, get it to go to work for us, so, uh, what was the project? The grant we got million?
I want to say million eight.
I wouldn't think that's right.
Is that sound right? Million two? Okay.
Million two, okay.
It was, I thought it was.
It is to extend for everybody here, that's gonna extend the sidewalk out north main.
I'm mixing it up with the phase two of million eight, so.
On third degree?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, it's gonna have to through there. Any questions? Comments?
Happy that we're getting them?
Absolutely, great use of the money. All right, entertain a motion. I'll make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifty-one.
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries, purchase of land at Hidden Acres Drive.
Cory, I'm gonna let you take the lead on that one.
So Mayor and Commissioners, at the November meeting, the city authorized city manager to negotiate the purchase of this property up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And this is the property that's adjacent to a, a city park. Pursuant to that authority, Kate did, uh, negotiate a purchase of the property for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And she entered into a land purchase and sale agreement for that property. Again, the purchase price was a hundred and twenty, the city agrees to pay all applicable taxes, which there shouldn't be any. Um, and to split the title expenses. There were two conditions for, in the contract, one is that the commission approved the contract, and two, that, um, the city is satisfied with access to the property. So we have received title insurance policy that shows the property is subject to three easements. One is for access to the property, one is for sewer, and one is a right-of-way easement. So the access agreement serves the neighboring property, so it, it goes across the property that the city would be purchasing, and serves the other, that neighboring property. Um, we still have some questions out there exactly about, um, maybe not where it is, but just trying to clarify it anyways. But that is a condition to the approval, okay? So what we have before you today is a resolution, uh, that was given to you, it should have been on your table when you came in. Um, that would approve the contract and ratify Kate's signature on it. And also give her permission to close the property pursuant to this agreement. Okay, so it would still, if tomorrow we find out that that's not really access to the property, that we're not satisfied with it, she could, you know, not sign the contract, because it would not, we would not be complying with it. But as of right now, we believe all the conditions are satisfied, and you would be authorizing her to close on this property for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
So Cory, I think we dropped the ball, I don't think they have that in front of them. Is that, you have, I can make copies of real quickly?
No.
No.
Emailed it, um. I emailed it, so I'll be here.
No. Somehow that didn't make it to, for you guys to all have in front of you. Everything she's describing is in it, but.
Yeah, um, we could table this, this is the one appropriate time to table it, get, let us print this off, and you could go through the agenda while we get this document.
That makes sense, I apologize, I'm just, I'm just looking at you, you all are looking, and I'm looking, and we don't have.
I mean, I'm going, I don't have it.
Shipper will get it printed off for us.
I'll email it to Shipper, just hang on, just a second.
So we'll table that and go on to the next, is that?
Yeah, that would be my request, they'd have to do it. They'd have to make a motion to table.
I make a motion to table the purchase of the land at Hidden Acres Drive.
To the end of the meeting?
To the end of the meeting.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Downtown revitalization.
So we did get two bids yesterday from Floyd and Floyd, and Nickel Brothers are doing a joint venture project, which is awesome, and it's kind of different. But it's, I think it's been accepted by T-Dot, because they submitted everything they needed to. And, um, Adams, the same company that continues to bid, and they just finished out the, um, all the street work at the, uh, Arts District in Columbia. So Adams is a great company, the prices did go down. Um, we wish they would have gone down a little bit more, uh, but they did go down. I think we're getting to a very doable level of being able to do this project. So it's gonna come back to you in January, because right now we're doing due diligence and going through the bid. We just literally opened it yesterday, so we're gonna come back in January and have to, uh, make a decision going forward. But I want to give you a positive message, and I think we're heading in the right direction. And we all sat down and had a budget meeting and said, okay, what's the gap that we have to make up? And I, I think we're getting there.
Kate and I have talked about it briefly, maybe reaching out to some other parties and seeing if they would maybe come to the table with a little more money.
Mm-hmm. For a project that's over ten years in the making. So since it's on the agenda, I guess what I would ask is you defer this to next month. And I think we'll be fully, really ready to take action at that point.
Any questions, Kate? Entertain a motion to defer this until the January meeting.
January sixteenth.
I make a motion to defer, um, downtown bid to January the sixteenth meeting.
Okay, got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and consideration of M TASS's proposal to assist with the search and selection of the city manager.
That's all it's gonna be, Cory.
But also at the last meeting, y'all voted to open the position and to ask M TASS for assistance in helping you with the process for selecting a city manager. So, um, you received in your packet a proposal to assist with search and selection process for the city manager. Looks like this, and that outlines the process going forward. Um, if you would like, I can kind of do an overview of it. So, again, it kind of outlines what M TASS is, what they do, um, and what they would do in this process. So, the action items that y'all would have, um, M TASS will send you a, the first thing you have to do is decide what kind of city manager you want. What are the qualifications, criteria, minimum requirements, things like that. So to assist with that, M TASS will send you all, all four, all five commissioners a survey with a bunch of different questions in it. And you'll answer those questions on your survey, you'll send it back to me or to the M TASS representative. They'll use that information, and they will put it together to present you a job announcement, which outlines what, if, if there is a consensus, they'll outline kind of what the consensus was for that job criteria. Then at a public meeting, y'all will vote on the job announcement. Okay, so the survey would be something you would do on your own, and then at a public meeting that's publicly noticed, um, you would vote on the, I think he calls it in here, the advertisement of job announcement.
Right.
Okay? So that would be, again, the criteria, minimum requirements, pay scale, things like that. Um, then you'll decide how long the position stays open. The recommendation is a minimum of thirty days. Another option is to leave it open until filled. So that would be thirty days, or until we find applicants that we're satisfied with, okay? Um, that's something you would decide also with that job announcement. Then after that, so your first public meeting would be to decide the criteria, the job announcement. Then we have a period of time when the position is open, and people submit applications. They will either submit them to us or to M TASS, again, that's decided by y'all. Then when we receive the applications, we'll have another public meeting, and the board will consider those applications. And they'll decide, y'all will decide at that meeting who you want to interview, okay? And the plan would be to interview, to pick a shortlist, you know? We'd like to interview three, five, however many people, to identify some dates that would work for the commission, and then to try to set all the interviews on the same day. Okay, so that would be a second public meeting that you would have. You would decide that. Then, um, the next thing would be at, the next public meeting would be, again, all publicly noticed, would be where the interview actually takes place. So that would happen at a public meeting. Um, M TASS outlines in here how they would do that. Their recommendation and things that they've seen that work with other cities is they prepare the questions, and they conduct the interview, and you listen to their responses. Um, and then at a separate public meeting, you would make a decision on how to move forward. And at that meeting, you would either decide, we, we, we like somebody, we want to move forward with, you know, negotiating a contract with them. Or you would say, you know, we'd like to do a second interview with this person and bring them in, and let them meet people, or whatever you wanted to do. So, um, and then after that, then you would negotiate a contract with whoever you picked. And that's something M TASS would step away from that, that would be completely on y'all. So there's a series of public meetings. Um, in this proposal, you'll see that there are, kind of, in blue, there are your action items, and that says what the commission would be doing. Um, there is a timeline in there, that timeline obviously changes depending on when these public meetings happen. Um, they all have to be, all these items I just mentioned have to happen at a public meeting, have to be publicly noticed. They don't necessarily have to be regularly scheduled public meetings. Um, you know, if it might be more efficient to have the interviews at a separate meeting, then, um, you know, y'all could do that, so. But that's all of, all of the thing, all of the decisions rest with this board. So, um, that's kind of a long overview, but that's, that's essentially what this is. And if you've got questions, I think you look like you do, so, got questions, I'll try to answer.
The long and the short of this is, when they send out this initial interview to us, being the board.
Initial interview.
Questionnaire, you mean?
Questionnaires, that they were gonna send.
Yes.
At that time, we'll make a lot of these decisions that you, as individually, but as a group, will, like, number of days to post that type stuff. Will, will that not be a part of that questionnaire?
Um, I think the questionnaire is mainly for the criteria.
Okay.
Um, and then the job announcement would include, they would, then, M TASS would gather that information from your answers to the questionnaire, and then they would put it in a proposed job announcement. And then you would publicly vote on the job announcement at a public meeting. But, you know, um, But, you know, um, they didn't tell me exactly what would be in that questionnaire, but I think it would include things like, you know, minimum education, um, what kind of experience that is important to you as a commission, um, salary range, um, it's more, it's more catered to the type of individual or the qualifications of the individual that you're looking for.
Okay.
And that really sets the parameters for how the process goes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next. I got mine, Angela.
When it talks about, um, the city versus M-TAS, like the job announcement, stuff like that, is that something that we can both, like, does that mean that the resumes all would come either to M-TAS for them to go through them first and they would make a decision? Or does that mean, what does that exactly?
That's really where does it go? Like, it'll say, submit resumes or submit these applications to this place, either the city or it's going to go to M-TAS. Um, I, I did ask M-TAS whether they would provide any assistance in, um, helping you identify which applicants met the criteria that you had identified. And they will do that, but you will see every application and you will decide as a board which people to interview.
Regardless of whether they get sent to M-TAS or to us, we still see.
Right, yeah. So that's really just, you know, you have to say, send your applications to X. And that's the answer to that question.
Got it.
It, it would honestly either go to M-TAS or Shipper. The way that would usually work. Um, but yeah, the answer to the question that I think was asked at the city meet, at the Thursday meeting was that, um, M-TAS does not make recommendations on who to interview. The decision on who to interview and not interview is completely with the Board of Commissioners. However, they can identify those applicants that meet minimum requirements as advertised, but that's on the caveat that those requirements are clear and measurable, such as like a specific degree or a specific minimum number of years of experience in X-Lazy profession. Um, but you will have to go through all of the application.
And that would come out on the survey I would be looking for.
Yes, that would come out. Well, it would, each one of you are doing the survey individually, but then you'll vote as a group on what the criteria are. And then.
Sorry, is there anything that can be provided to us to kind of look at as a template? Like what, what does a typical city manager of a city our size or a little bit larger, what is their criteria for a job? You know what I mean?
Uh, we can send you some, um, if you, if you look at the list on the first page, it, it lists a bunch of cities that, um, M-TAS has used this process with. I have the one for Shelbyville. I can send their job announcement to y'all so you can look at it.
That'd be really helpful, yeah.
And we can probably ask M-TAS if they could share the others that are.
And the biggest concern that when you look at other cities, most cities do not have three utilities. Many cities have no utilities. They, they, that's a separate entity. So that's a really big deal here that we need to make sure that somebody has some real utility background because that's a big part, that's a big part of my day, every day. Um, and I, and I can't even remember Shelbyville. I can't, I don't think Shelbyville had any utilities. Yeah, they're, they're all through a utility district. So that makes the job entirely different. So that's important for you guys to just keep that in mind.
Utilities or something.
I did share that with, um, the M-TAS representative and told him, you know, that one of the things that makes the city unique is that we operate all of our utilities. Um, and he said they did have some comparable smaller cities that, um, I, I don't, I'm not sure that they're on this list, but they, they have worked with cities like that as well, and so they understand that that's important. So I assume he will include something like that in the questionnaire, but, um, yes, that's what Kate said.
That would be an easy disqualifier, you know, of anybody that has no experience with that.
I think anybody that doesn't have utilities is working in Disneyland. It's like very fun, but it's not, it's not fun when you have utilities. It's a whole lot of work.
Um, another question that you all, someone asked me at the study session was whether you vote on the entire proposal or whether you have to vote on each part. At this point, we recommend that you just vote on the entire proposal because it outlines the process going forward. As I mentioned, like if you take different steps, um, it will change that timeline, but the, the proposal is intentionally kind of vague, so it allows for all the decisions that you will make.
Makes sense.
I appreciate it and it, and the action items are really helpful because otherwise it gets like, yeah.
Anything else for me?
Anything else for Cory?
We are not getting your email though on the other.
It didn't come to me.
We can try that again.
All right, do we need to, do we need to?
Oh, yes, sorry.
You're back.
You got your things going on here.
All right. Having heard all of Cory's and it seems that everybody's asked some questions, I entertain a motion to, uh, move forward with M-TAS as we've already discussed.
I make a motion to move forward with M-TAS in the selection process for city manager.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now we'll pick back up on the real estate piece.
For some reason, we're just not getting that.
It was probably too big. I sent a lot of documents.
Okay.
Cory, because I think the biggest question was about that one particular item.
So the resolution says that you would be, um, approving the land purchase and sale agreement on the terms set forth in the contract and that you would ratify Kate's signature on that. That's the first thing the resolution does. The second is that you would give Kate the authority to execute any and all documents necessary to purchase the property according to the terms set forth in the contract. And I think what you're talking about is the access. So there is a contingency in the contract that said, we don't have to close and it's not a default on the contract if we're not satisfied with the access. So what happened was there were three different easements that connect to this property. Um, and we have, Mr. Campbell can attest, we have sent about a hundred emails today trying to make sure we're all satisfied with exactly where that easement is. So, um.
Now, who is this easement for?
It's for the property behind it.
Hidden acres.
Yeah, hidden acres.
Okay, all right, now that makes sense.
So they have access to their facility.
Yes, that makes sense for, if nothing else, emergency vehicles.
Yeah, so I think, again, I'm trying to get confirmation with the people that did the title search, but the road, it used to be called Sunset Drive, it's now Hidden Acres Drive. It goes up to the city property or to the property that's going to be purchased and it's a city road up until that point.
Right.
But then once it crosses this property that the city's buying, it's just an easement. But that means if you buy that property, you're buying it subject to that easement, which means you could use it to access the property, but you can't move it or abolish it. You, you're, that's a, that's part of that property forever is that easement, okay? So you couldn't build a new baseball field on, right on top of that easement, right? Uh, same thing with the sewer lines. Um, but we just, I just want us to be absolutely clear that that is the one that's applicable, that is where it is. We do have the right to use it and so that was the reason for that condition.
And as we talked today, basically, if we just have it for green space to secure the other green space that we have, it, we do nothing. If we decide later to build or do something and, and, and make, try and make it a city road, that would be our responsibility, then it would be our responsibility. But right now, it's just access. And so right now, the way I look at it is you're just, you're protecting your green space. We don't know what we're going to do next. It's going to be a parking lot, it's going to be another park. Not sure yet, but you're protecting the park that you already have.
And who's responsible if there was damage on that road where it's the easement part? Like if it needs repaired?
I think it is the Hidden Acres, it's Nursing House, that's what it's called.
Because you're offering them an easement to get through there.
Well, there, there's terms to the easement. It's non-exclusive and it says that they are the ones that maintain it. And then it also says that the city were to, to, this easement was written in the nineties before this transaction was contemplated, obviously. So it said in there, if this becomes a public road, then no longer the Hidden Acres, uh, Nursing House.
Yeah, that would change. That would be something that would, you all would have to talk about.
Yeah, but you would just be buying it subject to the easement. You're not accepting it as a city road by purchasing the property.
Yeah, I've done a lot of real estate deals. I've, since the first one I've heard of, not, it's not a rarity.
I'm just happy that it exists, the easement.
The easement's there, yeah.
But that's really what we were concerned about.
Sometimes that doesn't happen.
Yeah. Um, and I think it answered a lot of questions that the city had from past experiences, you know, whose road is this? Um, who's supposed to maintain?
And maintenance.
I, I feel satisfied right now that we have the access that we need. I just, uh, would like to make sure Kate does have the option to, if we find something out tomorrow, um, not in the contract, so.
I can't disagree. Do we need to have a motion or anything on it, Cory? Because we've already approved the purchase of.
The resolution of that, here, I'm just going to give you.
Y'all have it in front of you, yeah.
They don't have it in front of them.
That's right. I'm trying to find, sorry.
It's the one I just read to you. This is what we're, um, consideration. That's the resolution.
There's one, I, I'll just hold on to this one, one, two, three.
There you go.
And I'll hand this one back to you, Cory. How's that?
I've seen it.
Exhibit A.
And I apologize, when I sent it in email, it didn't come through because it was too big. The exhibit A is the contract that has those two conditions in it. Condition that y'all approve at tonight's meeting and then condition that we're satisfied with the access. And the purchase price is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and we would split the title fees. We have, they've already sent us a closing statement, but we've asked for changes to it because it had the city paying some taxes, which I don't think are applicable.
Cory, there's your copy back.
And also the reason that you're, you didn't get the resolution in your packet is because we had, because you passed it at the last meeting, thought that we would just do this by motion and vote, um, but the title company actually needs a resolution for them. So they would know if we closed, who would cooperate.
Who's tied up?
Makes sense.
I'm afraid so.
He's made title. Okay.
I think your title search is the local.
Let me make a motion on this.
Yes.
So they're actually voting on this resolution?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I make a motion to accept resolution twenty-two-three dash fifty-two.
We've got a motion to accept the resolution. Do we have a second?
Okay.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Passed.
Motion carries.
You passed it? I hear you say you passed it. Okay.
All right, that gets through the regular business. General comments from citizens. And Ms. Lisa, it's your turn. And Lisa's the only one that signed, so if you don't mind, Lisa, name again and address, please, ma'am.
Lisa Cole, one oh six West Merchant Street. Um, I would just like to say as a Mount Pleasant citizen and taxpayer, I think as far as city manager position, we need someone who is well-versed in experience. Um, I urge you all to work together to get our someone as city manager. I mean, we have more building coming in and we need someone who has experience with our infrastructure. And I hope that you all will work together to get someone who has the experience that we need. That's all.
Lisa, thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, Lisa, I want to thank you. Lisa is our chairman of our BCA committee, uh, that you don't meet that often, but thank you.
For your time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, that's all we've got. Uh, Ms. Pam, you got anything you'd like to?
Yes, I'd like to thank you, sir, for accepting our offer. It was a blessing you were asking and I appreciate that very much. I think it'll be a big asset to the city. And I mentioned this on, um, Thursday night, but I'm just so happy that we were able to put on two events, um, well, between the Rotary Club and, um, Mount Pleasant, Haverley with the Christmas tree lighting, that we could have anybody in town wanting to be there, have beautiful pictures taken and experience a really great celebration for Christmas. And, um, we need to do more of that. I'd like to see us do as many things as we can that are free, that people can come and really have a great time and families. Um, so I want to thank all the employees, the city that, that helped make all that happen and, um, some of those sirens were a little tricky. They're the pretty. And then also, I, I want to thank all of you, just citizens that are here. This is a really big year for us. Um, I finished, this is my completion, my first year as commissioner. And, um, this coming year is a huge election year. We've got three potential seats up and, um, it's critical. I'm asking everybody I know when I'm talking to them to start coming to these meetings or watch them because it's really important that you see how your commissioners are voting and who's voting, who's not, who's participating, who's really not. And it's real important that you start talking to your friends and neighbors and get them involved in, because we are on such a great trajectory right now. The city manager position is absolutely critical to us and to the whole surrounding area, really. And, um, every single person on this commission needs to be focused and team Mount Pleasant. It doesn't mean we have to agree on everything, but we need to be focused on what's best for the city. So I just would like to thank everybody that's coming, ladies that are here that, and folks that are coming to be part and understand what's happening here. And, um, apparently my phone number is wrong somewhere, so can you want my phone number?
I would just give it.
But anyways, I just, I, I, it's a big year. It's a really important year and this manager's position is absolutely critical. So, um, I just want to encourage everybody to get people involved.
Really?
I agree with everything that Commissioner Johnson said, but I would just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and, uh, we thank you for all you city employees for doing a great job. Uh, we have a great town and we might not make everybody happy, but we try to make good decisions for Mount Pleasant and we just pray that y'all be patient with us and, uh, Happy New Years and Merry Christmas.
Amen. Thank you.
It's a vice of our co-attorney over there. I am making a public statement that I have one daughter and I put her in the grave on Thursday. So please don't blast me on Facebook saying that I need to resign because I'm promoting my children. I have been up here for eight years and everything that I've had to do and everything I've tried to do is for the people of Mount Pleasant. And we all don't agree. I don't agree with raising taxes or putting people in offices, don't raise taxes, but people in Mount Pleasant can't pay their light and water bill, buy their medication and stay in their homes. I ran all the votes of the people and I would still consider to back the people. Also, when we get grants, it's because of the number of citizens that we have in Mount Pleasant. Not one set of citizens, but all the citizens of Mount Pleasant. That's why I fight for stuff on both sides of town and for all the people of Mount Pleasant. If you dislike me for that, it's okay because that's my judge. Have a Merry Christmas.
I'll close it. Merry Christmas to everybody. I, I've said this from day one, that if we all agreed on everything, we were going to say, we got a problem. I think we can, just that I've attempted to do this a couple of months ago, is that I think we need to continue to try to respect each other's time and when they're speaking, not try to speak over them. And I think that this is a business for the city of Mount Pleasant, not individuals. And that's who we've got to keep in business, is the city of Mount Pleasant, not individuals. And I'll have to agree with Pam, we are on a fantastic trajectory right now. If you just pause for a moment and think about a hundred and eighty-five jobs we announced in four days and a hundred, uh, another sixty million dollars worth invested.
A million, two in grants.
I mean, we're, we're in a great place, so Merry Christmas. Thank all of you for being here. And for those of you that serve on any boards or whatever you do, thank you. Goodness gracious knows, thank you. You get paid a lot to do that, man. Merry Christmas.
I make a motion to be reserved.
A second.
Yeah.